Is Happy Hearts Day, Happy Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Um, first item on here is the oath to office for Lee and myself.
Excellent. So Madam Chair, Commissioner Brisbane, if you could please stand for me, please. And if you each could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Marcy Weaver.
Lee Brisbane.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning Commission in the city of Breezy Point, Minnesota.
Of the Office of Planning Commission in the city of Breezy Point, Minnesota.
Of the Office of Planning Commission in the city of Breezy Point, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda, item C, is the election of officers. We'll be electing a chairperson and a vice chairperson. Do we have any motions for elections for a chairperson or vice chairperson?
Madam Chairperson, I would nominate Marcy Weaver as chair.
Do we have a second to that nomination? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and moving on to vice chairperson, do we have a motion for a vice chairperson?
Madam Chairman, I would nominate Lee Brisbane for vice chair.
We have a motion for voting on Lee Brisbane for vice chairman. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion has passed. All right, moving on to item number D, we have the approval of the December thirteenth minutes. So I mean, we have all read that. If there's any discussion, please have it. If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion has passed. And moving on to the council liaison report for the sixth meeting. And Steve Jensen, will you do the honor?
All right, um, it was a long meeting, four hours. Um, I'll start with, you know, what pertains to, you know, the planning commission. If you have any other questions, I'll answer them to the best of my ability. Um, as far as the administrator and staff reports, the, um, public hearing on proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash oh one, um, basically, uh, there was discussion on placing a moratorium on short-term rentals. Uh, what the council decided to do is hold a public hearing. Um, I believe March is what we're looking for. There will be a mailing to every resident property owner within the city of Breezy Point. And then at that point, you know, we'll look to, you know, make any decisions or just move forward as is. Um, there also was a public hearing on the consideration of proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-three oh two. That was last year, the council added in, uh, the water well testing as part of the short-term rental process for the license for, uh, what was it, mercury and sulfide? Um, that was removed because residents came to the city, um, Administrator Chansky. Nobody in the state of Minnesota tests for it. Um, so there was no point in having it. Um, otherwise, the license would have been issued because the short-term rental license was effective, um, you know, January first, twenty twenty-three. Um, also, there was discussion on reestablishing the EDA. Um, there was some discussion on it, but decided to table it and for the council, take up the discussion at a later date. Um, talked about EDCs, EDAs. Um, there was, uh, Bladick was there and then one other gentleman. David, where was he from?
Uh, it was Eric Sherpintier with the Crow Wing County ECA.
Okay, so. It was, and again, we'll look at that, you know, at a later date. But at this point, the city, as far as an EDA goes, we don't have any public land to develop. So is an EDC appropriate? Um, so we'll just have to look at that. Um, then there was a discussion on updating the zoning code. Uh, there was a Jennifer Hass Camp from, um, Swanson Hass Camp Consulting. Uh, she previously worked with Administrator Chansky in Brainerd, uh, when they rewrote their ordinances. Um, there is, I got a link, um, from Administrator Chansky today that shows those ordinances. I didn't get a chance to dive into it too deep. But they are easy to read. They have diagrams on property use. Um, it's, it's not written by a lawyer. It's written so residents and people can understand it. Um, the council will discuss it later this year and look to, um, proceed with it if we do in two thousand twenty-four. Obviously, the planning commission is gonna be involved in that as well as the city planner. But I would strongly suggest getting that link from Administrator Chansky. Um, I was very impressed with the consultant and the way the ordinances were written, so. Uh, let's see. They purchased a dump truck that went through that, that was talked about last year. Um, and then there was the disc golf course, um, which, uh, I think the echo said contentious hearing. Um, a lot opposed and some for. Um, there was a motion to, uh, by staff to, uh, get quotes or try to determine what it would cost to restore the disc golf course to its original form. Um, it will be on the agenda further. Um, if that does not pass, then we obviously have to, you know, we will go forward. It's, you know, with the disc golf course. I think some of the discussion will be, um, some of the residents lost a lot of trees and their view, um, look at, it was always targeted, I believe, to restore trees to three residences. Um, now, that, again, that's gonna take further discussion as we move forward. And rules from the park board as to, um, you know, tournaments being held, fees, you know, a lot of questions, um, surrounding that. So, um, that was the two hours and ten minutes. Um, but it was a good discussion and it, we'll, uh, pick it up again, um, in the near future here. And that's really about it as far as what pertains to the planning commission.
Does anyone here have questions? Thank you, Steve. All right, next on the agenda is the open forum. Uh, anyone in the public is invited to speak. Uh, if there is not a item on the agenda already listed for their topic, and if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address and business. All right, from lack of seeing anyone come up, we're gonna go ahead and close the open forum and move on to item G, which is a public hearing for the conditional use application. Um, for Brad Thayer at eight four four two Bushman Road, Breezy Point, Minnesota, east six six three, or six hundred and sixty-three foot of southeast quarter, parcel one zero zero five zero five zero nine, constructing a forty by ninety-two structure. Uh, cumulative total accessory structures would equal fifty-five sixteen square feet. It is zoned estate lots residential, which is E L R in our book. So we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, we're gonna start with the applicant presentation. So I invite the applicant to come to the podium, state their name and address and any details about the application.
Brad Thayer, eight four four two Bushman Road. Um, hi me again. As the process went through with the home occupation, we found out at the end that I was over on the square footage on the estate lots. So I already had the drawings for the building made up. So that's why I'm here tonight, I guess. Pretty much any questions?
Uh, I do have one question. So on item number four, you asked about drainage. Um, and you said you may need to add additional drainage system. Can you tell me anymore about that? Is that something that you foresee having to, um, add to the property? Or is it just something that you put in there in case?
Just for like rain runoff, I suppose, maybe, you know, just to get that away from the, my gravel driveway I got there. But I don't see any big issue there, no.
So mostly just grading?
What's that?
Mostly just grading.
Right, yep.
Does anyone else on the commission have questions at this time for Brad?
Um, yes, we stated that, um, the original, um, blueprint had a certain square footage on it, but you, you're dropping it down then?
No, no, the, I had my drawings written out and then we found out at, at the end, it was like the day of my home occupation proposal that, oh, I'm, I'm five hundred and sixteen feet over. So that's why I got the, you know, instead of changing the plans, you know, I already paid for the drawings and everything and that was set up how it was. So instead of redoing the drawings, I just did the conditional use permit so I could get that other five hundred and sixteen square feet.
You did mention maybe removal of trees. Is there much for tree removal that you foresee?
Yeah, leaners and dead trees, yeah. I'll probably cut out like four or five nice pine trees with that be it.
Thank you.
Yep.
What do you store in the green shed?
Which one? The top one? Actually, right now.
Are there two separate ones?
Yeah, there are. The feral cat lives in the bottom one. And then I got like tractors and other, other stuff in the top one. There's no electricity or anything to back to them buildings there. They had sheep in there before in that building, so it's a barn pretty much.
And you indicated the color would be green. Is that to match?
The same as the other buildings, yeah. It looks the same color structure. And then also in the shop area of the building, I would take the windows out just to, then there'd be no issue of, you know, having the windows down in the summer or something like that. Then that way, no issues with an open window in the shop.
So no noise or otherwise that you foresee having?
I don't see it anyway, but just that kind of eliminates it and it's more energy efficient for me too. So kill two birds with one stone, I guess figured.
Any other questions?
Nope, nothing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and we're gonna move on to the staff review.
Again, this is conditional use permit application two oh two three zero zero one. Applicant Brad Thayer, address eighty-four forty-two Bushman Road. Um, parcel number is one zero zero five oh five zero nine. And the zoning of the property is estate lots residential. Applicable codes are one fifty-three point zero three five, one fifty-three point zero four four, and one fifty-three point one one nine. Conditional use request for an accessory structure up to two percent of the parcel on parcels five acres or more or five thousand square feet. Uh, Mr. Thayer currently resides at eight four four two Bushman Road. The property is a twenty-acre parcel. There's a survey included in the, uh, packet. It's owned, again, estate lots. The property currently hosts a two-story home and three outbuildings. The, uh, total square footage of the, uh, accessory structures that exist is eighteen thirty-six square feet. Mr. Thayer currently owns and operates a specialty medical manufacturing facility in a rented structure in Fairfield Township. Mr. Thayer would like to relocate his business to his own property at eight four four two Bushman Road. And he is proposing to construct an additional forty by ninety-two square foot, or forty foot by ninety-two foot, three eight, thirty-six eighty square feet accessory structure to houses medical manufacturing. Should be noted that, uh, a home occupation for the medical manufacturing was approved by the commission in December of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the proposed, uh, forty by ninety-two accessory structure would create a cumulative total square footage of accessory structures of five thousand five hundred and sixteen square feet. Um, that additional five hundred and sixteen square feet that is above the five thousand square foot requires the conditional use to go over, um, up to two percent of the parcel of the property. Uh, upon review of the conditional use application, the commission needs to consider the findings as required in section one fifty-three point one one nine E. In review, the commission should state whether or not finding is acceptable towards granting the ECD. Following findings must be met. The use or development is an appropriate conditional use in a land use zone. The property is zoned estate lots residential and the request is appropriate under section one fifty-three point zero four four and one fifty-three point zero three five. The use or development with conditions conforms to the comprehensive land use plan. Use with conditions is compatible with the existing neighborhood. The use with conditions would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or, appearance, or prosperity of the city. Uh, the following conditions must be considered. The conditional use shall not be injurious to the use or enjoyment of the property. The conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development of the improvement of surrounding vacant properties for use predominant in the area. The conditional use will not create excessive additional requirements at public costs for public facilities and services. The use does not require any additional public infrastructure. The conditional use will promote and preserve the Northwoods character of the community. The conditional use will be vehicular approaches to the property, which are so designed as not to create traffic congestion. Um, should be noted that as part of the approval of the interim use permit, uh, the, uh, ingress and egress was stipulated for the property to be from Bushman Road through the existing driveway that, uh, services is property today. Um, adequate measures have been taken to provide sufficient off-street parking. Um, the use is keeping with the residential character. Additional measure, measures have been taken, will be taken to prevent the control of offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, et cetera. Proposed use is condecent, no commercial use of the property is proposed as a condition of the conditional use. It is, the proposed use is a, a home occupation for the manufacturer, again, which was approved earlier. Um, conditional use will promote the prevention and control of pollution for the ground and surface waters. Proposed use is keeping the residential character of the neighborhood. Uh, the applicant has filed the appropriate application. The applicant has paid the appropriate fee for the application. Public notice of the conditional use hearing was published in a legal note newspaper and all property owners with three, three, within three hundred and fifty feet were given mail notice of said hearing. Public hearing is being held today. Staff has reviewed the following site plan, CUP application. Um, again, accessory structures up to two percent of the parcels on five acres or more. Over five thousand square feet on parcels greater than five acres is an appropriate use in the estate lot residential zone. Uh, the following may be appropriate conditions for approval of the CUP. Applicants shall obtain a building permit for accessory structures. Applicants shall comply with all setback requirements. Accessory structure shall comply with state building code. Accessory structure height shall not exceed twenty feet. Uh, the total accumulated accessory structure square, square footage shall not exceed five thousand five hundred and sixteen square feet. And the ingress and egress to the accessory structure shall be from a private driveway on to Bushman Road. Um, just an aside, I heard the applicant talk about windows in the facility and taking those proposed windows out. Um, it might be premature to talk about that without having the building or the plans reviewed by the building inspector. There may, state building code may require that there be some extra exits because of the use and there may have to be some, some lighting and ventilation, ventilation type things. Um, I, I don't know where that's, where that's at and, and that's later on down the, the process. But I don't want anybody to get too concerned if, in fact, there are some windows put back into it because it's probably something that needs to happen for state code.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Jerry? We're gonna move on to public input. If there is anyone here that would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and, um, feel free to share with us your, your thoughts.
My name is Dallas Scovin. My address is three two one two nine Northwoods Lane. I guess I'm a little confused on the changes here. And, uh, where the structure is gonna be because of this five thousand square feet is what was approved prior to the last time meeting here, right?
The, the use was approved at the last meeting. There, the new building was not approved. That is what is being considered today. The new building for, that exceeds a cumulative total of accessory structures of five thousand square feet.
And what does that mean?
That means he, today he has outbuildings.
Yeah.
And he's proposing to build another outbuilding.
Okay, on the same five acres?
On the same twenty acres.
Oh, I thought we was talking about five acres.
No, we're talking about twenty acres. The, the parcel is twenty acres. Uh, I think we could probably show the, the, the survey. That's a survey that's showing twenty acres. It's also showing the location of the, the new building.
Okay.
Of the proposed new building.
The map that was sent to us, then, is this what's outlined in, in blue on this map? Is that what that twenty, uh, twenty acres is?
Yes, the, the outline in blue is the twenty acres.
Doesn't look like twenty acres to me. And so where the house and everything is now, that's not included in that twenty acres?
That is included in the twenty acres.
Oh, okay, okay. I was visualizing this.
No, there's no.
That the previous owner had for his sheep and stuff. Was kind of a square area like that along that easement road.
It is not proposed to change anything there other than adding a new structure.
And then this structure will be in that blue square area?
Put the survey back again.
It'd be above there. So this is the property here, this whole twenty acres right here. And the existing house is right here. This, this, and this are existing, and this is the new building right there.
Is there gonna be, uh, any sewerage or septic system at all or, and a well? An extra well drilled?
There'll have to be a septic system. I don't know about the well. Um, I'm sure he's going to need water. I don't know if he's proposing to, uh, use the existing well that's on the property or if he's proposing to dig a new one. Uh, I'm sure he's gonna have to do it, uh, conforming septic system.
But if there is any chemicals used in the cleaning and washing of things, will that be contained somehow or is that gonna be flushed out through the septic system?
Based on, based on the operation, this, when the plans are reviewed by the building inspector, the building inspector will determine whether there needs to be grease traps and, and the flammable waste traps and those type of things based on the use of the, uh, manufacturing facility.
Then any chemicals he may be using on site would also be under the jurisdiction of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as well.
The only other question I have is kind of a general on the, uh, process that, uh, the planning and zoning uses as far as, uh, development of things. Is a, is it gonna be such that we're gonna start having manufacturing areas throughout the whole city? Most places have, uh, commercial area, manufacturing areas set aside so you don't go into the residential areas and you'll infiltrate, infiltrate those areas with, uh, the residential areas with manufacturing. It does, it isn't a good, uh, good marriage. You'll find that in a lot of cities, that, that's why they have designated areas. And so I guess I'm a little concerned on what the planning and zoning commission rules that you govern by.
I, I don't think the intent is to infiltrate residential districts with manufacturing or industrial uses.
Today is, five years from now, if I come here and wanna, uh, have a development on my property, you're gonna tell me, no, I can't.
I didn't see that.
I know, you didn't, I know you didn't, but that could, could happen.
It could happen. It could happen that this, well, part of the, the discussion as far as the home occupation was concerned was, it was limited to the amount of trips in and out. He's also limited by the number of employees that he can have. If he exceeds that and grows that business, he's probably going to have to go someplace else to someplace that's more appropriately zoned. I think the intent of home occupations in residential areas is to allow small businesses to start and grow. And the intent is that they prosper and go on to a, a bigger and better facility. But I don't think the intent is to have a proliferation of, of, uh, industrial, commercial uses scattered around, uh, residential districts. I believe if you talk to Mr. Thayer, I think he looked and looked and looked in the city of Breezy to find a place that he could, that would be available, that had the, the commercial zoning, and he wasn't able to find anything that was available. Uh, I don't think this was the, the first, uh, I don't think this was his first wish. Uh, but, but. I don't think this was the, the first, I don't think this was his first wish, but it's the request that we have today. In answer to your, your question about if you came in with a proposal for a home occupation to do X, Y, Z, it would have to go through the same process and the same, the planning commission would, would end up making a determination to yes or no. Every one of those situations is a little bit different. I don't think that we'd be looking at a building this size in, in a residential zoned area that had 12,000 square foot lots either. This happens to be a 20 acre parcel, which is pretty substantial.
All right. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to the official action for the conditional use permit, C23001. So commission, does anyone have things to discuss or is there anyone that would like to entertain a motion?
Then I would, I would like to go through just for this meeting purpose to kind of review what the conditional use permit requirements are and the findings and just kind of go through as a group here and make sure that we're on task. So as far as the findings, there are some that have to be met. There are four. So the first is that the use or development is an appropriate conditional use in the land zone and the property that we're looking at here is an E L R and their request is appropriate under those two sections outlined. So finding number A would be considered having that. The second one, the use or development with conditions to conform to the comprehensive land use plan, which if we look at what that plan states, I guess I would state that we have a, a task, at least in Breezy Point, to allow for home occupations. We've outlined what that means. We've had several discussions to ensure that it conforms with the land plan use and, and public opinion as well. And we've had some discussion on that. Is there anyone that feels that B would not have been met by this particular conditional use permit? All right. And moving on to number C, the other requirement that must be met, the use and condition, with conditions is compatible with the existing neighborhood. Given this is a 20 acre lot and the space that's needed and that it's being put in the center of the lot, I think is consistent with what we've seen in the area. Any other thoughts?
I don't think it'll be seen much by the public.
And then the, the fourth condition that must be met is that the use with conditions would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or prosperity of the city. Nothing that I have heard personally indicates that there would be a health risk or any kind of inconvenience to those. We, we did tackle that issue in the last meeting to ensure that we had an accurate number of trips and parking and, you know, disposal if there was any materials and things like that were addressed in the last meeting. I didn't hear anything new in this meeting that would cause me to think that that has So I think the conditions that we need to have met, we have met. The other ones to, for consideration, A through I, I, we can read those independently, but I think we did address several of these just kind of in the discussion. Highlights would be keeping the Northwoods' character, making sure that we're not losing destruction or loss of the natural, historic, or scenic features, you know, with taking down three trees. I think we've safely addressed that. The color is consistent with the other buildings on the property. We've addressed that the approach is from Bushman and not on any easements or other property areas. I think there was some concern there, so nothing there has changed. There isn't a need for any off-street parking, so that's, that's something that we need to consider for this particular one. Is there any questions or concerns that anyone here has with any of the items that are under consideration from A through I?
Questions?
All right. Well, then we've, we've reviewed what we need to have met and the things to be considered at this time. Is there anyone that would like to open with a motion? I would, I would entertain a motion to say to approve the applicant's conditional use permit. I believe that the conditions have been met for a conditional use permit. I would agree with items one through six for conditions. Number one being that the applicant shall obtain a building permit for the accessory structure. Two, that the applicant will comply with all setback requirements. Three, the accessory structure will comply with state building code. Four, accessory structure height will not exceed 20 feet. Five, a total accumulation accessory structure square footage shall not exceed 5,516 square feet. Number six, that the ingress and egress to the accessory structure will be from the private driveway that is from Bushman Road.
I would move, Madam Chairman, the approval of this application to include the conditions outlined in the staff review.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. And we have a, a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been approved. And moving on to the next item, is there any other business that we should have under consideration?
I don't have anything.
All right. Then I move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
One second. To adjourn the meeting. One second. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.